I'd like to go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting of Thursday, January 4th, 2024. It is 6:30 PM and we are in the Assembly Chambers. I'd like to ask everybody to stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance by Major Dave Davis of the Salvation Army. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assembly members, join me, please. Just want to say Happy New Year. We're off and running. We've got 12 months to make a difference. Father, just now, we bow our hearts and minds before you. We give you the praise and glory as you have brought us into a new year. Father, I ask a fresh anointing upon our Assembly members, our managers, our staff. Father, there is great blessings to be had and we're just looking forward to them. Father, we ask you for guidance and a blessing upon us as each of our Assembly members are working for the well-being of our whole island community. Father, we have a wonderful team and we ask your continued blessing upon them as they meet the needs and come forward with solutions to the many challenges throughout. Father, we just pray these things in the sacred name of Christ Jesus our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Supiakalutik people and we acknowledge the 10 tribes of the Kodiakalutik region. We recognize the Lutik culture that enriches our community to this day. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ames. Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Lidue.
Here.
Mr. Sharrett.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Whiteside.
Here.
Mayor Arnn.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next is approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Scott?
Move to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. For the public's information, the consent agenda consists of the regular meeting minutes of December 21st, 2023. Next item is citizens' comments. This is limited to three minutes per speaker. Agenda items not scheduled for public hearing and general comments. The local phone number is 907-486-3231. The toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. And ask speakers to sign in and state their name for the record and turn the microphone on before speaking. Thank you. Seema?
Good evening. Seema Garoot. I am your assessor and we had two Assembly members that came in and made over 180 phone calls today and they did it in a couple hours. And overwhelmingly, for the people that called me back to let me know that they had gotten the message and inquire what was going on, they really appreciated the humor and the professionalism and everything in each of those phone calls. So, thank you very much, Mr. Sharrett and Mr. Whiteside, for coming in. We are short-staffed in assessing and then to boot, I had a couple of people call in sick, so we were a staff of three down to one besides me. But they helped us immensely and I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to come forward? Please do it this time or call in.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Assembly members. Thank you for your service and Happy New Year. I'm here today because I sent you a note. I don't know if you had time to read it, but I'm not used to, you know, requesting funds and so I thought maybe I should come up and see if you had any questions. It's the idea of bringing together the, you know, various groups in town, fisheries groups and, let's see, the Chamber of Commerce. I can't name all of the people. Anyway, to hold a community reception for the Board of Fish, for those that didn't get the letter, because you're out there in radio land. It's to hold a reception for the Board of Fish, Board of Fisheries, Alaska, State of Alaska Board of Fisheries, who governs our, manages our fisheries regulations. And they'll be here for almost a week, hearing testimony and making tough decisions, as I know you all are familiar with. And so, we, the sponsors, thought it would be a good idea to welcome them and give them a chance to, you know, meet us. And so, that's, it's pretty simple. It's light appetizers by Nunyak and so it's kind of low-cost, low-key, and chill kind of a reception. But I'm just here to tell you that that's what it's about and if you had any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Any, a little abnormal, but any questions of Sue on request?
Oh.
So.
This is abnormal. I'm sorry.
None at this time. No, I'm glad you came up. I wanted you to come forward, Sue. And I don't remember if you stated your name at the beginning, but Sue Jeffries.
Yep, Sue Jeffrey.
For the audience out there. So, thank you for coming.
And I do apologize for the short notice. It's, we've just been, you know, our heads have been to the ground really preparing for the Board of Fish and then came to us. It's like, wow, it would sure be nice to put something together for them. So, I apologize immensely for the short notice and whatever you can do or not, just know that we are appreciative of all you do too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nova, is there anyone calling in? No phone calls, okay. Then we're going to go ahead and move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports by Assembly members or the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. First one is Ordinance Number FY 2024-4, an ordinance of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough, amending Title II Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.30, Rules of the Assembly, Section 2.30.080, Order of Speaking. Scott?
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2024-04.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Staff report would be to Assembly Member Turner.
Thank you. This is to shorten the time of speaking for each item from 10 minutes all the way back to five minutes. I think we've talked about it a number of different times over the last couple of weeks. And so, if there's any questions.
Okay. With that, we will go ahead and go to a public hearing. So, we'll open the public hearing and if there, the local phone number is 907-486-3231. Toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. Anybody wishing to call in or come forward and speak, please do so at this time. Give it 30 seconds and see if I have anybody call in. Seeing and hearing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and reconvene the Assembly meeting. Assembly discussion. Any questions, comments? Ryan?
I do have a couple of comments. They're going to take me about nine and a half minutes to go through, though. No, in all seriousness, though, I think, my sense of this is that you're trying, that the motion on the table through ordinance is trying to govern a body through regulations to try and have civility and good order. And I don't think that that is what this body should be doing, so I'm not in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Larry?
I'm not in favor of this motion. I think that we were elected by the public. The law asks for open meetings and I think open debate without limitation informs the public and informs ourself in a way that limiting that discussion will take place. I realize we could change the rules at the meeting, but I think the public wants more openness, not less.
Anyone else? Well, I'm going to chime in too. I don't agree with changing it. Currently, it's 10 minutes and potential for speaking two times, up to 10 minutes each. We haven't had that problem. There have been some problems in years past, but I don't feel we have that problem right now. And sometimes somebody can have a lot to say about something and I feel that this tends to stymied part of that discussion. I realize, as we discussed in the work session, that there is the possibility of extending it, but that takes a majority. And I've been on the side of some of those, as a minority on those issues, so I understand what it's also like to have the opportunity to speak. So, I don't support this either. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Ames.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
No.
Mr. Lidue.
No.
Mr. Sharrett.
No.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with four yes, three no's.
Okay, thank you. Just a second here. Next item is ordinance number FY 2024-11, amending Title II Administration and Personnel, Chapter 100 Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Section 2.100.040, qualifications to allow residents to serve on various boards, committees, and commissions. Scott?
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2024-11.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Staff report on this is by myself. I introduced this change. The crux of the change is to allow non-citizens, U.S. citizens, to participate. They are residents of Kodiak and participate in applying for different committees and that, that the borough has. So, what the, what this will do under the qualifications, it will strike, shall be a qualified voter of the Kodiak Island Borough, and install, shall either be a qualified voter of the borough or have been a resident of the borough for at least one year, and shall remain a resident of the borough while in office. So, that's the change to this. So, with that, we'll go ahead and close the regular meeting, open a public hearing. I'll read those local phone numbers again. The 907-486-3231, toll-free number 855-492-9202. Anybody wishing to speak, come forward at this time or call in, please. We'll wait just a bit, but not seeing anybody calling in or coming forward. So, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and reconvene the Assembly meeting, Assembly discussion. Roll call, vote. Oh, excuse me. Scott?
I support this measure. I think it's going to increase the number of people that can serve on boards and commissions from town, many of whom are not U.S. citizens and therefore are ineligible to vote. So, I'm in support of this. It increases democracy.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Lidue.
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
No.
Mr. Whiteside.
Yes.
Mr. Ames.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six yes, one no.
All right. Next item is Borough Managers' Report. Amy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Assembly members, and Happy New Year to all of you. Two of my main points have already been talked about, so that'll shorten this a little bit for us. Ms. Jeffrey came in and told us about the funding request for the State of Alaska Board of Fisheries. This event is scheduled to be held on January 9th from 6:00 to 8:00. In addition to the request, you'll see in the letter that both Nova and I gave you, so you have it twice, that it is an invitation to you all to attend that event as well. They're asking for a funding sponsorship. Nova has informed me that there is funding in one of your accounts for town meetings. It's listed there in the report. And if there is a consensus of the Assembly tonight, this is when we should shake our hands, a yes or no, then we'll go ahead and the staff will fund that. We'll let Nova count that.
So far, I have three.
One, two, three, four. No. On this. Count five. Okay.
Thank you. Next is lobbying for the Kodiak Island Borough. Mayor Arnn is planning to travel to Washington, D.C. to attend the NACO Conference from February 10th through 13th. I spoke with Sebastian O'Kelly, who, if you don't know who that is, is our federal lobbyist, about the opportunity to meet with our federal delegation to advocate for Kodiak Island Borough projects in the days after the mayor's conference. Seb did confirm that it would be a great timing and is working to see what meetings would be possible. I'm requesting that the Assembly discuss the lobbying effort and who should be meeting with our delegation and possible U.S. Coast Guard leadership that week after that conference. You will see attached to your packet tonight a draft federal CIP list from Seb as well. Every year, he gives us the draft of the federal CIP list. You'll see it's a combination of some city projects and federal, sorry, and borough projects. We are adding this to next week's agenda, so we'll talk about it on January 11th at the work session. I wanted to remind the public that the Solid Waste Advisory Board and the Engineering Facility staff are working with Boy Scout Troops 626 to pick up Christmas trees. That happens Saturday. You need to call and give them your location. The number to call is 907-512-9908 to arrange for pickup. As Seema told you about tonight, the senior citizen and disabled veteran property tax exemptions are due no later than January 16th. There's a picture in there with Assembly Member Sharrett and Assembly Member Whiteside that we're in assessing today and making those phone calls, so thank you to them for that. In Community Development, there's a Planning and Zoning Commission work session scheduled for January 10th. That is the meeting where they will be starting the discussion of accessory dwelling units and going over a recently published ADU document from the Alaska Municipal League that just came out. They're also discussing potential changes to Chapter 17, which is regarding rezones and code amendments. And the way that they're doing that is just a complete chapter rewrite, so it'll be interesting to watch that go through planning and zoning and how that comes to the Assembly. In assessing, you've heard week after week that there's been two outstanding 2023 applications that we were waiting for the Permanent Fund Dividend Office to contact us. They did not contact the PFD Office and so those are now done and those two remaining applications will not be refunded. For IT, you can see on the rest of Page 3 off of Page 4 and onto Page 5 are the projects that are currently be working on. I think one of the most important things that they're doing is the Training and Skills portion on the top of Page 5, where the new director is ensuring that all of the people in there have the same certifications and there's a list of stuff that they're training on. In Finance, we're at that time of the year where they're preparing the real property foreclosure documents. The annual four-week paper publication of the foreclosure list begins on February 16th and our annual popular report has been sent to the printer. We anticipate that it will be mailed on January 11th to all the borough residents. In Engineering Facilities, there has been work done out in the Bell's Flats area to continue to remove the trees that blew over in that last big windstorm out there. For Solid Waste, we have that Contract Committee meeting on Tuesday, January 9th at 1:00 in the conference room. At the landfill, our excavator is supposed to land on the island tomorrow, weather permitting, so we're excited to get that here. Brecken will be delivering it to the landfill and we're waiting for someone to come and train the staff before we start using it. Staff has been contacted by the Denali Commission to enter into the second round consideration for funding for the land, for future landfill planning. Staff just met this morning with Canada to discuss the potential to cooperate for the joint application. When we first applied, it was a joint application that both Mike Pfeffer and I signed, so we're trying to do it as a regional grant instead of just a single entity. At the school district, the North Star replacement and Skylight replacement have been the focus of our architects. We anticipate preliminary designs and cost estimates by the end of this month. And today, staff went out and met with people at Peterson and found a lay-down area and they're awaiting permission from the Coast Guard to use a ball field that's right next to the school for staging for that project. At the lead shape treatment plant, there was a nominally last week that required additional cleaning. They had a foreign substance. It was described to me like a blue algae that developed in the plant, so there was extra acid cleaning that had to happen to clean those out. And the borough building project remains the same. And then the rest of the report is just that CIP list draft from Seb and then the letter from Ms. Jeffrey. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have tonight.
Seeing none here. The only thing I had was listed. Okay. It was listed on, when you had asked about lobbying, I think, I think you should, as the manager, should be one that should go, but we'll discuss that. Ryan?
Yeah, that was exactly my question. It says here that in the lobbying, you're requesting the Assembly discuss the lobbying effort and who should be at the meeting with our delegation. Is it, are you willing to go? That's my question of the manager.
I am willing to go and I'm hoping that we have a chance to talk about that at the work session next week when we're talking about that CIP list and what that looks like. I did ask our lobbyist, like what, you know, how big of a group size is of effective? And he said, like, anywhere between two to four, but once you pass four, then it's just overwhelming and it's hard to get your message across. So, he said, however we want to handle it, if there's interest for more people or not, then that's great.
Any further discussion, questions? Larry?
I was wondering, would we be able to get a copy of the Alaska Municipal League's recommendations on ADUs?
Yes. I think they have it on their website, but we should be able to provide it to you as well.
Thank you.
It's cute. They call it AKDUs, so.
One other question.
Go ahead, Ryan.
When we, when trees blow down on borough land and they're replaced, do we distribute the firewood to people? What do we do with the wood? Is it available for people to use as firewood if they need it?
It depends on the situation. So, the trees that blew down in the flats that were on borough right-of-way that blew into people's properties, so we're removing them off of people's property unless they want to use it as firewood. There are some families who the trees fell out, but they don't have any capability of moving it, so those are ones that are first priority. And then there is a tree that fell and hit someone's garage, so we're dealing with that. It's an act of God, according to our insurance company, so it's not covered. So, we're working with those folks to get those details worked out. But if they do want it for firewood, then yes. If they don't want it, we're hauling it off, so it gets out of their way.
What do we do when we haul it off?
I think it's going down to the trash area where the dumpsters are. They're on the light side by the fire station and people can access it there if they want it.
Do they know that?
I'm not sure. We just started that because it's been so icy out there, but I will ask Mr. Conrad about that.
It's been done in years past the same way.
Usually, if a tree falls, you can hear it and the community just comes out and like, hey, do you need help with that tree? Because everyone wants firewood. So, when it fell across my driveway, it was gone within like two hours. So, but I can't confirm whether that's an announcement's made, but if it's not, we can certainly do that because there's a Bell's Flats Facebook page where that would be really easy to do.
Yeah, my only concern was sometimes some people are in the know and some people are not in the know and so they can't access, you know, something that's available to the entire public. So, I like the idea of posting it on the website out there or anywhere else where people can have access to it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Go ahead, Bo.
Probably the minority here, but just categorically, I do not support funding the reception. And the reason I say that is I don't support using potentially taxpayer dollars to fund a reception where alcohol will be present. And I don't, just generally speaking, I don't support mixing politics with other decision-making bodies and user groups and using public money for that. So, just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Larry?
Since it came up during your report, and I'll just say this for the record, I have a problem with consensus. I believe the manager should have the authority, you know, within a budget to allocate money for this kind of thing without the Assembly. And I don't think anywhere in our ordinances allows us to have a vote on whether we want to give money or not by consensus. And so, that concerns me a little bit because that could get out of control very easily. I also think, as I said at the beginning, that you should have the authority to make those decisions based on something that is set aside for public interest without us doing a consensus. We've been doing that a lot lately and it really facilitates quick decision-making. I'm not questioning that. I almost wish there was something there to do that kind of thing. But I am troubled with allocating money based on consensus when it's not part of law or ordinance or regulation, as far as I know.
Nova?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Assembly, technically, you've approved the funding already because it's in the budget. It's just that we haven't had this type of request lately, the past few years. That's why we thought we'd bring it to you. I thought about not bringing it to you as well, but, you know, there are certain things that are already budgeted for and those ones we don't bring before you. But this one, it's, you know, it's, they haven't been to Kodiak in a while, I think, and requested funding. That's why we thought we'd ask you.
Part of it is it's in the legislative portion of the budget, which is the Assembly's, not the manager's. And that's why this has been done for years and years and years. So, thank you. Any other questions? All righty, we'll move on. Next item is messages from the mayor. I don't have any more tonight, so. Next is resolutions under new business. This is Resolution Number 2024-11, adopting a state legislative capital improvement project priority list for the 2024 legislative session. Scott?
Move to adopt Resolution Number FY 2024-11.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After the discussion last night, we've provided two versions of the ordinance. One is just the clean copy without the tracking and that right after that, you'll see the tracking with our traditional red strikeouts and blue edition of new language. You'll see that we took out the City of Portlin's disaster and emergency preparedness portion because that wasn't actually a capital improvement project list and we added back in the service area of road improvements and paving as you requested.
Discussion. Any, seeing no questions, roll call, vote on the motion.
Mr. Lidue.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
How are we voting on this? Are we voting for Resolution 1 or Resolution 2?
There is just one.
Just one.
It's just Resolution.
It was modified.
24-11.
As we, as we modified it at the work session.
Okay, the modified version, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Nova.
Mr. Lidue.
No.
Mr. Sharrett.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside.
Yes.
Mr. Ames.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six yes, one no.
Thank you. Next is ordinances for introduction. This is Ordinance Number FY 2024-13, amending Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.30, Contract Purchase, Sale, and Transfer Procedure. Contract Purchase, Sale, and Transfer Procedures, and Section 3.30.020, Limitation on Manager's Authority to Increase the Spending Authority From $25,000 to $50,000. Scott?
Move to advance ordinance number FY 2024 hyphen 13 to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Assembly Member Griffin.
Yes, thank you. This was brought up at the, or introduced at the work session last week. And after some discussion, I think we came to a very reasonable compromise, increasing the manager's spending limitation from $25,000 to $50,000. The last time, it started out as a discussion from the Health Facilities Advisory Board in specific to enterprise funds. And the last time the manager's spending limitation was increased was in 2003, now 21 years ago. And so $50,000 kind of adjusts that for inflation. And, and then we also discussed, just go ahead and increasing it, not just from enterprise funds, but just the general spending.
Across the board.
Across the board to $50,000.
Okay, thank you, Jared. Any further discussion? Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only statement to this is that as we shift spending allotments, I would like to see that this $50,000 limitation is on a per vendor basis so that there's not contract shifting. That is plausible within this scenario, if that's what we're trying to capture. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, Larry?
Maybe Assembly Member Sharrett could clarify exactly what you mean by that for the public.
Go ahead.
So, contract shifting is where, let's say that there's a project or a good or a commodity that is in exceedance of a spending authority, the signatory of the spending authority will break it into two smaller, less than contractual obligation amounts. So if it's a $60,000 purchase, they'll have two $30,000 checks to bypass the $50,000 spending limit. This is a very common practice throughout local, state, and federal governments. And I just want to see that if we are trying to increase this, yet still have control, that that indicate a per vendor basis. Thank you.
Yeah, I understand and I agree with it. James?
So, the way that I'm reading it is if the value of the property, service, or contract exceeds $50,000 without first obtaining Assembly approval, with, with the exception of utility bills. So, the only thing that you're specifically saying is to add in there after property, service, comma, vendor, comma, contract, or contract. So are you, are you proposing an amendment? And that would be an amendment on line 25 and 28. To me, it already reads that way, but is that what you're saying?
Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an issue that happens even at the $25,000 limit. It happened to me when I first started. I got two, one was like $13,000 and the next one was like $16,000. And I wasn't paying attention and I looked and it was the same vendor and I was like, hey, I can't do this, you know? And so it's something that you just have to watch, no matter what the spending authority is. I can say this because the person who did it no longer is employed by the borough. But yeah, I think that's a real concern. The borough actually watches so that we don't do the $50,000 or the current $25,000 and it's supposed to be to any vendor over a year. So it's, it's a lot more stringent than just a couple of contracts in a row. We try to watch where the money is going in total over the year. So we have more safeguards in there that are listed, that is what actually listed in that portion of the code.
James?
On line 29, it specifically says if the total payment to one contractor exceeds $50,000 in one fiscal year. So it's, it's basically in there. I'm just wondering, are we wanting to change those two other lines?
Ryan?
Yeah, the answer is yes. There's, there's a very distinct difference between contractor and vendor. And so vendors are identified by either a tax, tax identification number or EIN. Contractors can rebrand themselves as often as they want. So by including the terminology vendor, I believe that that would satisfy my needs for contract shifting.
James?
So are you proposing an amendment? Or are you just saying you'd like to see it?
Well, since this is the third bite and I'm over my five minutes, I don't think I can.
It's five minutes each time.
Oh, perfect. Then, yeah, if, if we're at the position to create an opportunity, then I would like to propose an amendment to include the terminology vendor in this ordinance for introduction, FY 2024-13.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. You want to follow up of anything?
Nova, the, the, on line 25, it says service, comma, vendor, comma, is what we're looking for. And then the other is line 28, project, contract, purchase order, and/or change orders per vendor.
Correct. That, grab, that captures it. Thank you very much, Assemblyman Turner.
Does that take care of what you need, Nova?
So we have, the maker of the motion is Assembly Member Sharrett. Who's seconded it?
Scott.
Scott's number one.
Smiling, that second one. Jared?
All right, here we go, semantics. Line, so line 25, it doesn't, I don't think it makes sense to put the word vendor in there because the, the phrase is if the value of the property, which makes sense, the value of the service, the value of the contract, but making it the value of the vendor, that, that, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense. So.
Ryan, you had a comment?
Thank you, yeah. A value paid toward vendor may work in that, in that instance.
It's unnecessary if you have it in the other workplace.
Nova?
I just don't think you need it.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may suggest, I wonder if Assembly Member Sharrett would be amenable to maybe just withdrawing his motion and then we can work together in, in putting together a draft that we can present to you for next meeting.
Ryan?
And then you can amend it then. That way we can spend more time on it and make sure that the grammar is correct and...
Withdrawn.
Thank you.
Scott?
I withdraw my second.
Okay.
You don't, we don't need the second.
I know.
Yeah, thank you.
I just was kind of really making sure it was withdrawn. Got them here twice. So with that, any further discussion on the ordinance? Staff will come back with language for their... Steve?
Well, we had a motion and it was seconded, and so do we have to withdraw that?
Yeah, it was.
Okay. I knew the amendment was withdrawn.
The motion, the main...
So, any further? Jared?
So I have a question about that. If we're taking the, the draft ordinance back to revise some language, how does that affect, then, this vote to move it for a public hearing?
Basically, it was the, what was, it was the amendment, not the ordinance.
So what is?
Well, we're still going to amend the motion.
We're moving, we're moving it forward to a public hearing, just the first reading.
If we vote. If we vote.
Right, which would be the intent.
Yeah.
So move, the motion is move to advance the ordinance to a public hearing at the next regular assembly meeting. Then at the work session, staff will have a recommendation there for any changes on there. Any further? Nova?
So we'll have a, a version two that you can review at the next work session. So we're advancing it as is. And then at the next regular meeting, you're going to have it before you as drafted right now, but you're going to have a second version and you can amend it at the next meeting with the new version.
With the new, so it's in front of everybody?
Okay, thank you.
The language.
And then that way, we're not words meeting tonight and then that way we know that we've done our work correctly.
We can do that in order.
Thank you. I'm just a little hesitant when it comes to ordinance. They're just a little bit tricky. Thank you.
And I was happy that the maker and the second were in favor of that to happen. So anyway, so what we have is the motion to advance the ordinance as is to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly. Any further discussion? Roll call vote on the motion.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lidue?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, seven zero.
Next item on the agenda is other items, confirmation of mayoral and assembly appointments to the different boards, committees, and commissions. Scott?
Move to confirm the mayoral and assembly appointments of the following. Gerald Friend, Tyler Swanson, and Cody Allen to terms to expire 2026, and Doug Mathers for a term to expire 2024 on the Architectural and Engineering Review Building Code of Appeals. Ben Milstein and Stephen Paulson to the Parks and Recreation Committee seats for terms to expire December 2026. Doug, Craig Dagan for a term to expire 2026, and Sarah Frazier for a term to expire 2025 on the Planning and Zoning Commission Borough Seats. Andy Wall to the Solid Waste Advisory Board seat for a term to expire December 2026. Brian Ferris and Gerald Friend for terms to expire 2026, and Yasha Zabitnov to an alternate seat to expire 2026 on the Citizens Board of Equalization. Craig Johnson for a term to expire 2026. Dan Beeler for a term to expire 2024, and David Zimmerman for a term to expire 2025 on the Mission Lake Tide Gate Service Areas.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. These were the different ones. There'll be one more that'll come up at the next meeting. There was one name that was forwarded to the city for confirmation on planning and zoning. It's one of the city seats. And that's Dave Townsend, and that's supposed to be back. They have a meeting next week that they should be acting on it and it'll be at our next regular meeting. And then, and that'll give the full, full board to planning and zoning. So any further questions or that? Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if the DPO could restate the motion?
No, we couldn't.
Okay.
He has heartburn.
All righty, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Mr. Whiteside? Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lidue?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with five yes, two no's.
Thank you. Next is approval of a letter of support for tribal broadband connectivity program round two Alaska application funding opportunity. Scott?
Move to approve the letter of support for tribal broadband connectivity program round two Alaska application funding opportunity.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Assembly. This letter was requested by Mary Hampton, Alaska Communications Client Account Manager. She is reaching out as Alaska Communications is partnering with Old Harbor Native Corporation to apply for an NTIA grant to bring fiber to Kodiak, Women's Way, Old Harbor, and Akiaq on Kodiak Island. Thank you.
Thank you. Any Assembly discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Turner? Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lidue?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you. Next item is citizens' comments. This is for agenda items, not scheduled for public hearing, and general comments. Local phone number is 907-486-3231, toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. Anybody wishing to speak, please come forward. Oh, wait a minute, see if anyone calls in. Thirty seconds. Seeing none, we'll move on to Assembly member comments. I don't remember which side. Mr. Turner, I'll start with you.
No comment tonight. Thank you.
Steve?
No comment.
Jared?
I have a couple of things. I went to the school district budget, budget presentation right before this meeting and I think a couple of things for us to, that there's, that there's faced with, there are some unfunded mandates related to the Alaska Reads Act and every, every single school is asking for reading specialist positions now. The special ed department has seen an increase in IEPs and 504 plans related to, to, to reading due to Alaska Reads Act and some other things. So I couldn't say the whole time to see what it really looks like in terms of their budget, but I think that's probably going to be a narrative that we will probably see as we get into our discussions with them. The other thing is, a few weeks ago, I, I wrote a FEMA grant for KMXT, $50,000 to upgrade to the, that's called the NGWS, Next Generation Warning Systems, to increase radio capabilities to deliver emergency information and everything. And that, that took me to, FEMA also has a huge, it's called Safeguarding Tomorrow, revolving loan, loan fund program that is just for rural and remote communities just like us who face natural disasters. And that might be something the manager and staff could look at. It's a, it's a big fund, but we face flooding. Some buildings need some earthquake, earthquake help. But there's a, there's over, there's $150 million there that might be worth us looking at. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Jared. Bo?
I just wanted to just throw out another reminder, if, if my fellow Assembly members have not reviewed the now expired strategic plan for the borough, please do so. At some point, we need to start discussing what an updated strategic plan looks like. I think taking what our predecessors put together with the community and reviewing it and taking that from there is, is the path I would prefer to see. But if you haven't read it, please do.
Thank you. Larry?
I brought this up on several occasions in the last year and that is, I believe it's time for the Emergency Services Council to sit down and take a look at our comprehensive plan. And that would cover everything from how our processors evacuate, how they go, safe pathways to move, how we move people from downtown and other areas and lower, dangerous areas in terms of... areas in terms of tsunami or any other catastrophe. I don't think we're ready for a major disaster, and I think that we'll do well because people work together like they did in '64 to make things happen, and we have a lot of advantages. But we still haven't had a comprehensive review, to my knowledge, of the COVID crisis, which was very controversial in our community. And we frankly should have done that a long time ago while it was still in people's minds. And the relationship between the city and the borough and our outlying villages and our people who live around the island in terms of communication, some of the controversy about crosswalks should be something that we should be talking about. If you've ever tried to come from Monashka Bay to high ground, the roads are packed. Do we tell new people where to go if there's a tsunami alert? Do they go to the schools? What are evacuation centers? There's a lot we have to do, and a lot of times, we don't really think about that until something happens. And what sort of causes me a little bit of stress as a community member, and I have been involved in training, and I've been Homeland Security certified, and so I'm not speaking without some knowledge that we're just not ready. We have been ready, but we really need to sit down as a community and brainstorm what we can do to make sure that any crisis that will have the infrastructure, the planning to move forward. I think we have great people in charge, but I think if we don't have a plan, we're going to run into problems. So I'm not sure if I have to introduce an ordinance to make this happen, or if it's something that we could put on the agenda. I don't control the agenda, the mayor does at this point. But I really do think we need to sit down as a community and have open discussions and collate it around the plan that we have. We have good people, but if you don't plan, we're not going to be ready. So I am concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott.
No comment.
Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start off by complimenting the Assembly here. It's the fastest the group has funded a $500 decision today. I agree that we need to look at that strategic plan, but I want to spend a little bit of time talking today about a couple hours that Mr. Whiteside and I spent making some phone calls. So today, we were given a list of nearly 200 people to contact and remind them as a courtesy for their senior exemptions and their disabled veteran applications. I would have to tell you that the overall consensus was that they were very happy that Beau and I were calling and it wasn't the mayor calling, but they were appreciative for the reminder. Once the purpose was stated, they were extremely grateful, and it just lends itself to regrounding. And I would challenge the other members of the Assembly to participate in an event like that when we need to reach out to the public because it, it lends to not only connecting with our constituents, but also to see what the staff goes through. Some upset, mainly not, but it just gives credence to the realism that our staff faces, and my eternal gratitude to Seema and her staff for the, the work that they put into this. So anyway, I would just challenge the Assembly to volunteer next time. In addition to that, I'm pretty hung up on the lobbying for the KIB portion here during the manager's report, and I'm extremely grateful that the manager does want to go. And in the essence of not seeming overpowering, I would just caution everyone to think that the manager and our lobbyists go, that we don't have a third, or a fourth, or a fifth individual so that our groups of two and four can stay concise and to the point, unlike our five-minute speaking limit. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, the next Assembly work session is scheduled on Thursday, January 11, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The next Assembly regular meeting is scheduled on Thursday, January 18, at 6:30 PM in the Borough Assembly Chambers.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:24.